Good evening. On November 14, 2019, Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Today, our invocation and pledge will be led by Noah and Micah Collins. Noah Collins, age 10, is a fifth grader at UT Tyler University Academy and is a Cub Scout, PAC 262 at Trinity Episcopal Church. Micah Collins, age 9, is a third grader and also a Cub Scout. It looked familiar, it's because Noah and Micah have helped lead the prayer and pledge to the City Council meeting before and wanted to come back and do it again. We're glad to have you guys. Everybody stand, please.
Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this in Longview, the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in the offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, guys, for coming back and seeing us again. You're welcome anytime. Y'all keep up the good work. Tonight, in employee recognition, we're going to recognize Facility Services. The City of Longview Facility Services Division is responsible for maintaining all of the City of Longview's 52 facilities. This includes 526,000 square feet of building space. Some of those buildings are as old as 1936. Key services include heating, AC, plumbing, lighting, and carpentry. This is a monumental task for such a small division, but they have consistently excelled to meet our citizens' and our staff's needs. A big part of maintaining these facilities has been establishing a capital evaluation and replacement plan for large capital assets like HVAC systems and roofs. This allows for proper budget planning and major replacements. Not only are they responsible for existing buildings, but Facilities Manager Kevin Chumley has taken a leadership role over the construction of Facilities, including in the 2018 Bond Project, which includes a new police facility, three fire stations, a fire and police training center, future innovations to existing police buildings, improvement at several park facilities, and renovations to Broad and Park and Recreation Center. Very thankful for these incredible jobs that Kevin and the Facility Team is doing for our community. So please come forward. Kevin Chumley, Facilities Manager, Shawn Hagenbueker, Facility Supervisor Timothy Smith, Kenneth Romero, Robert Castillo, and Clayton McCoy. Y'all come forward, please. Come on up, gentlemen. Wow, y'all do a lot of work. And, you know, we don't really realize how much work really goes into the things that we have. You know, it's like, it's like all of us. We all own houses. We all have things to do. Imagine taking care of your house, everybody else's house, and one of you. That's what these guys do, take care of everybody's house. All of our stuff, y'all take care of it. You do a great job. We appreciate the money you save us by keeping things up and running and keeping us in control with that, the facility, the maintenance that you're working on. I really appreciate that. And, you know, it's an unsung job, but we're singing your praises tonight. So thank you, guys, very much, for what you do. Y'all do a great job. Keep up the good work, gentlemen. Thank you so much. Great job. Great job. Great job. Thank y'all. Great job, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Keep up the good work, guys. Night, y'all. Okay. Community recognition. I should've just stayed up there. Sorry about that. Got ahead of myself. Okay, tonight, a community recognition. This is really a special, special recognition for me because I'm so thankful to be honoring people again that I love and love this community that just never, never, never take their eye off the prize, which is Longview. And so, tonight, Ms. Betty Horaney and her son Al, I want you to please come up. They think they're being honored for taking care of our police and firemen this year on the meals that they provide for them, because they do such a good job of taking care of our public servants. But that's not really why they're here. There are two of my recipients for our new Go-Giver Gala that'll be coming up in January because of this Horaney family that has done so much for this community. And that's the one I can get her here and not think that she's being awarded something else. But these people are the consummate go-givers. Never, ever is something needed that they wouldn't step up and do uncalled for, unannounced, and don't want any credit for it. And that's the Go-Giver Facility, that's the Go-Giver spirit that has made this so special. And, you know, this year, this is my Aunt Betty, by the way. This is, she has raised me along with Mary and my mom back here. Al and I have grown up together. These are just special people that put Longview first. And so, as you know, this year, we're honoring families that have made an impact in the community. The Pope family was, is going to be part of this. Joyce Lynn Fadema Judy, I never pronounce her name right, with Infinite Plus Magazine, and the Horaney family. You all are just special people that continually give and give and give to our community. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate you, and I look so forward to celebrating that in January at our banquet. And you just have to plan on being there January 11th. I didn't even ask y'all if you were going to be available, because I knew I'd give it away.
I already have her check. I have to see me.
I know you do. Do you know why? Because she's always giving. She's always there. This family has just been the backbone of downtown Longview for, I can't even tell you how many years. I used to go to their feed store when I was a kid. I'd get the little chickens, you know? That's just what I remember. And, you know, her husband Albert was Uncle Al to me. And, you know, they have never, ever spent a day in their life where they didn't think of doing something for somebody else. And that thought and that process is just amazing. So we love you, we thank you. Y'all are going to be awesome go-givers, and appreciate you being here.
Well, and Longview has been good to us. Thank you very much.
You've been better than Longview, and it's going to be y'all, I guarantee you. Al, thank you, sir. I look forward to it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys. Thank you, y'all, so much. Look, so forward to January.
Thank you.
And so, that's three of our four go-givers this year. And tonight, we're going to round out the fourth one. And this is another family that has never, I don't think they know the word "no," they always do things for this community because they love Longview. This is the Peters family, Peter Chevrolet. We have, who all we got back there? I see Scott, I see Keith.
Chris.
And Chris, hey. Okay, Peter Chevrolet, Peter's family, come on up here. How you doing? How you doing, man? Hey, buddy. Okay. Let me tell you how this all came about. Randy won't come, because Randy doesn't want any credit. Randy doesn't want people to recognize him, because that's who he is. And I can tell you, these young men are taking the torch from Randy, and they're carrying on the tradition of what he's done in our community. And it'll take every one of y'all to fill his one set of shoes, because that's what, that's how big he is, how big that family is. You guys have had a legacy in front of you that not many people get, to see a dad who loves the community, who loves his business, who loves his family. He's been a role model for you guys, and you all are so blessed to have that. And we, as Longview, are blessed to have Peter's Chevrolet in our community, because they, their name is everywhere. And it's not, it's because people ask them for something, and they give it. They give and give and give. And, you know, that's what makes Longview so great, and that's what makes Peters such a wonderful family. We're so honored to be able to honor you all and your dad, who doesn't want any credit, but I'm so thankful that he allows you guys to do what you're doing. And y'all keep up the good work, because this is going to be a legacy that you'll pass on to your children. These family businesses, they just keep propagating themselves, and I think that's so important, and I'm just so proud to know you guys, to do business with you all, to know your dad. Randy grew up across the street from my aunt, and so I've known, or he's known me, he's a little older than me, but not much. So I've known him a long time, but, you know, he's just a great guy, and he's raised fine young men, and you guys will carry on that legacy. So thank you, guys, thank your dad for us, but the City of Longview thanks Peter Chevrolet for all that you guys do. Thank you, guys. Thank you, buddy. Thank you, Scott. Thank you so much, guys. Thank you. Get back to work. Y'all aren't closed yet. Get up there. So that rounds out our Go-Giver honorees for this year, and I'm so, I'm so proud of who we had this year, with Joyce Lynn Fadema Judy, I don't know how to pronounce her name, the Peters, the Pops, and the Horanys. What a wonderful event we're going to have in January. And you realize, this event is all going towards funding Highway 80 and bringing back the park that we have lost. And so, we're going to bring that park back, we're going to bring it out into the open, we're going to make it where we have a great place to go. So if you haven't made plans to come to the Go-Giver Gala, make plans to come. It's January 11th, it's at Mon Cobb. It's going to be a lot of fun, and we're going to raise a lot of money, and all that money's going back into Longview. So thanks for all those involved, and thanks for the people that have gone to such trouble to get to this point as we are right now. So, all right. We are too late. Before I go any further, I want to recognize troops 621 from Alpine Church of Christ. You guys, stand up. This group of young men have come here tonight to earn a merit badge, working for the citizens of the community, citizenship in the community. I got to go back and meet with them a minute ago, and we got to ask them some questions. They interviewed me, and they kind of asked me some pretty hard questions, so, but they were very nice in the way they did it. We have Kenneth Redfern, Abram Aguilar, Mateo Aguilar, and Frank Mitchell. Y'all come up forward, guys. I just appreciate these young men coming forward tonight and, who wants to kill you? I like you short, guys, but me. I want you real close. You're way away. Really, what, are you 17 years old and you're like nine feet tall? But I appreciate these young men who have taken time, you know, earning these badges and these patches, and that's not easy. It's a lot of work, it's all they have to dedicate, and it shows great character. Y'all, it's a character build to your life. So keep up the good work, and I appreciate you coming up here and hanging out with me today, okay? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it, gentlemen. Good men. All right? Thank you, man. Get a picture real quick. Awesome. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Okay, now on to citizen comment. I do have a few speaker cards tonight. We'll start with this Lydia Brown. Just luck of the draw.
Really, I was going to come in and fill in the blanks, just in case somebody forgot to say anything, but...
That means you'll be short.
I will. That's my plan. Well, three minutes, that's pretty short, anyway, right?
Right.
The reason that I'm here...
Please state your name and address, please, ma'am. Name and address.
Oh, Lydia Brown, 205 Northwest Drive. So the reason I'm here is to make sure that you guys are aware of the coyote problem that is occurring in the city limits. Personally, I had not seen a coyote until last week, when I was going to let my cat out at 7:15 in the morning, and there was a coyote running towards my neighbor's house. I live just in front of Harris Creek, and there are a lot of posts on the Next Door Neighborhood website, if any of you guys are on that website. If you run a search for coyotes, you'll see the posts that are there, the people who have had their animals. What it's gotten to now is, they will be outside with their pet, and a coyote will come up and get it. That's how bad the coyote problem is. So, you know, I don't let my cat out at night, but I guess the thing is that what I've seen in all of these posts are a lot of made-up answers whenever people try to call someone who they think can do something about it, such as coyotes are an endangered species, so you can't shoot them. There's only certain kinds of guns you can have in the city limits, and besides that, who wants a bunch of citizens out wielding guns, shooting, you know, randomly at coyotes? However, that's what I'll do if one's in my yard, I'm going to shoot that coyote, because I'm going to feel like I am in danger. And just, and just so you know, there was a girl in Illinois this year, I believe it was in September, little five-year-old little girl, swinging on her swing set in her backyard, and a coyote charged at her. And they have it on video, and you can look it up online and see, see the video of that happening. So the natural progression, you know, they're, the coyotes are starving, and they're, you know, they're running out of animals to get the wild animals. So now they're getting pets that are out in the dark, and then now people aren't letting their pets out in the dark, so they're grabbing their pets while they're out in the morning in daylight. Anyway, I'm just happy that someone decided that it might be a good idea to come here, so it's now a matter of public record, and the whole City of Longview will know that it's a problem that has been addressed. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And if at the meeting, our Animal Control Officer, Chris Kemper, is here. Chris, I saw you earlier. There he is. He will meet you in the back, and he'll tell you what we're doing, and what we can do, and how we're addressing this problem that we are aware of, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Lisa Peavy?
My name is Lisa Peavy. I live at 1501 Lotus Lane. I come on behalf of the Wildwood Homeowners Association, which I'm the manager of. I've lived in Wildwood 33 years. I've been manager for almost 13 of those years. I want you guys to know, this year has been unprecedented in the number of animals, pets that we have lost. It's to the point where I'm afraid to even let my dog out at night, because where she goes to do her business is around the back corner, where I can't see her, so now we have to go out there with her. I would like the city to take a more proactive stance in getting out this information. No, you cannot let your dog out at 11:00 PM to do his business if you're not out there with him. No, don't let your cat out at 5:00 AM, because that's his normal habit, because people have done this. Don't let your dogs have the dog door access. They need to know these things, because we've not had this extent of a problem before. I'd like to see them do what the City of Frisco did. They only did this after they had seven human attacks, so they kind of sat on this for a while. They thought they were dealing with one coyote, that's how naive they were. They found the one coyote and relocated him. So just, of course, all of his friends showed up to continue the attacks. They continued into the winter. Finally, in January of this year, they launched an interactive map, where citizens could go on and populate that map. You could do a different color for sightings, a different color if you've lost a pet, you know, or have been attacked by one. And consider that our poor Paul Borman trail walks winds right through the middle of their habitat, maybe put out a warning about that, because right now, they're the top of the food chain in this area. They don't have anyone that's going to be their predator. And that's about all I've got to say.
Thank you so much. Mr. Kemper will be back there to talk to you as well, ma'am. Lloyd McGowan?
Hi, I'm Lloyd McGowan, 1120 Still Meadow Lane, here to talk about the coyotes as well. I just want to make sure that the city doesn't put this off, as has just been pointed out by Lisa. Until just recently, it was something I ignored, heard reports about them, and then my neighbor across the street brought his video, his security camera video over and showed me three coyotes in his front yard eating a cat. And so, it is a definite problem. Y'all are becoming aware of this now, if you weren't before. And we just want to make sure that the city takes some effort. I know that they can be trapped, they can be moved to some more rural area possibly, take them up to Little Cypress Creek or something, where there's not any people living everywhere. But make some effort to do something with them. And as far as what Lisa just mentioned about being able to see locations, possibly the City Send app could be implemented, something on that app, to allow people to see where these creatures are running most actively. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. I have other speaker cards. We have another presentation item. We have a presentation of proclamation recognizing Longview Texas as Purple Heart City. Michael Eubanks, a life member of the Military Order of Purple Heart, will be present to receive the Purple Heart City proclamation. Michael?
So, Purple Heart City, November 14, 2019. Whereas the Military Order of Purple Heart has requested that the mayor, by proclamation, recognize Longview Texas as a Purple Heart City, for its continuous support of our military veterans, and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in the present use, and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782, mission of military order, the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. So now, therefore, Andy Matt, authority vested in the City of Longview, proclaim Longview Texas as a Purple Heart City. So we appreciate that so much. I know this is special, this time of year, this week, this Veterans Week we celebrate. And, you know, the most important thing about this whole thing is that we do never forget, because the sacrifices that have been made for us will never, never go unnoticed. The sacrifices being made allow us to be here today, allow us to assemble, allow us to pray, allow us to go to school, allow us to grocery shop, allow us every freedom that we have. So I appreciate you and all those that have come before you in those services, and thank you for your, for your time and effort.
I appreciate it, and I appreciate the City of Longview for adding to the trail that goes across Texas. It's really cool. I do appreciate it.
My pleasure. Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. This is for you. Is this for me? Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. We switch. Have a good... Thank you, my friend.
We now have a presentation of recommendations for implementing the Walk of Stars in downtown Longview. Tim Patrick?
Thank you for having me today. Mayor, council, and city manager. To give you an overview, I'd like to start and thank you for allowing me to present an update on our progress with the Walk of the Stars project. First, I'd like to thank the mayor for his help in pushing this initiative and helping bring this project to fruition. Secondly, I would like to thank the members of our task force who have taken the time out of their busy schedules to work on this project. First, our task was to develop recommendations for commemorative Walk of the Stars in downtown, coinciding with Longview's sesquennial celebration in 2020. We split up into four committees. The selection committee, the logistics committee, future and fundraising committee, and the celebration committee. And I'd like to take this time, if anyone is in attendance from the committees, and at least be recognized for it.
First on the agenda was the name of the overall project. Lots of thought had gone into this. Walk of the Stars kind of insinuated maybe that it was just a, you had to be a star. Maybe you were a celebrity, and we wanted to make sure that we were embodying the full picture of what we decided. That brought the name change to the Walk of Honor. We think that the Walk of Honor better embodies how we feel about this project, and we want to honor those all who have contributed to the City of Longview, whether from the beginning or to our current time. And also, there's a Stars Over Longview effort, which we wanted to avoid confusion, and we didn't want to take away from the existing name recognition that they already have and the effort that they've put in for many years. Next, we had the Longview Walk of Honor, and with that, we had suggested categories for who would qualify and how you would qualify for those. Just to make it brief, but whether it's history, education, industry, or business, it could be judicial or law enforcement, medical or science, it could be sports, entertainment, arts, culture, especially community civil service, public service, civil rights, and The selection for the criteria can be individuals, families, or groups. It can be throughout Longview's history, it can be living or deceased, and you don't have to be a celebrity or well-known. And we would like, you know, to say that they spent their formative, or creative, or impactful years in the City of Longview area. The criteria selection was a fun process, but again, accomplishments had to have a positive impact on Longview or beyond, a lasting impact or continuous record of service, preferably at least for five years. Clear connection to the greater Longview centric geographic area, but not limited to the city limits, and cannot be currently elected officials. The nomination process, so anyone can nominate. You can nominate online or by email, provide narrative to justify the nomination, and nomination period would be from January 1 to March 1. The selection process with the committee, the selection committee conducts initial review of the nominations according to minimal qualifications. The 2020 task force votes to select, and we decided to start with three to five honorees. We wanted to narrow it down a little bit, not to bring too many to start with, which we might overload the process and take away from some of those honorees by starting with too many at the same time. The future years, we wanted to create a large diverse voting committee to function on a three-year staggering term. The physical logistics, which I think is great. We want to utilize existing brick pavers that are already in the downtown area, sturdy materials such as a bronze or granite, which we'll decide what that's going to be with everyone's help. We're going to start at the southwest corner of Heritage Plaza. We thought that that was important to incorporate that, and continue doing sidewalk through the downtown area. We have some slides starting there at Heritage Plaza, which I think is important. And then this would be the first, the left-hand side of Heritage Plaza, that wall is where we would start the first Walk of the Star. I think this will lead to a great pathway that people can take and walk along that line and not be sporadic across the city. You're not just randomly walking around looking for stars, but you can actually take a trail, and we thought that was very important. On the celebration committee, a single day for two events. We thought a public and a private event would be nice. Free to the public event would be downtown during the day, and then the private party or event would be ticketed as an evening event for the recipients, family, and sponsors. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. We didn't want to make it too long, but that's the overall presentation. At this time, I'd like to ask Shawn Herr to come up for any question and answer time, as he has been instrumental in helping with this initiative, and we really want to thank him as well.
Tim, first off, thank you so much for doing this and...
Yes, sir.
...guidance forward. This is going to be far greater than I ever expected it would be, and I just appreciate you all for all the time and effort, the committee members. I know, you know, you get asked to do a lot of things in life, and sometimes, you know, they're worthwhile, and sometimes they aren't. But this is going to be one of those worthwhile events, and I think we're going to look back on, and we're going to go, wow, are we glad we did this or not? So it's going to be a great event. Thank you so much. Thank you, all the committee members and all the services you're providing for us.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions of Tim or Shawn? Great job. Carry it forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We have another public safety update. Chief Bishop?
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Bonds, good evening. It's time once again for us to start accepting applications for our Teen Academy that we host every year. We'll be starting another academy in January of 2020. This academy is open to our youth, age 14 to 18, and will run on Monday nights for approximately six weeks. We'd like to encourage any of our youth that are out there that are interested in law enforcement as a career, or that are just interested in learning more about how we operate, to go to longviewtexas.gov/teencpa and download an application and send that in to us. And we're now accepting applications, and we'd love to have those that are interested come participate in this, in this Teen Academy. We're also beginning to accept applications...
I know, you know, you get asked to do a lot of things in, in life, and sometimes, you know, they're, they're worthwhile, and sometimes they aren't. But this is going to be one of those worthwhile events that I think we're going to look back on, and we're going to go, wow, are we glad we did this or not? So, it's going to be a great event. Thank you so much. Thank you all the committee members and all the servants, the services you're providing for us.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions of Tim or Sean? Great job. Carry forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We now have a public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Bonds, good evening. It's time once again for us to start accepting applications for our Teen Academy that we host every year. We'll be starting another academy in January of 2020. This academy is open to our youth aged 14 to 18, and will run on Monday nights for approximately six weeks. We'd like to encourage any of our youth that are out there that are interested in law enforcement as a career, or that are just interested in learning more about how we operate, to go to longviewtexas.gov/teencpa and download an application and, and send that in to us, and we're now accepting applications, and we'd love to have those that are interested come participate in this, in this Teen Academy. We're also beginning to accept applications for our Business Academy. If we have any businesses out there that have managers, CEOs, owners of businesses that would like to come, this is geared a little bit differently than our normal Citizens' Police Academy. We hold this on the third Wednesday of every month for nine months, and these classes will begin on February 19th, and they run during the lunch hour from 11:00 to 1:00. So anybody that's interested can go to longviewtexas.gov/polic, and again, download an application there. They can click on the Programs tab, and all our applications for all of our events are listed on there. We'd love to have any of our, members of our business community that are interested also in coming to learn more about the Police Department to come and participate with us. Here recently, we had an opportunity to participate in the Career Inspire 2019 event hosted by LEDCO. This was an event, a career fair, for all of the eighth grade students throughout Longview to come to MODCob and learn about different careers. They do this in the eighth grade prior to getting into high school. Hopefully, they would have already chosen a career path and helped them in gaining information about the different careers and opportunities that are available right here in Longview. So, thanks LEDCO for inviting us, and I'd like to thank all the students that stopped by the booth and picked up information. And I know that's been a big topic on what can we do to help educate our, our children and students here so that they want to start a career and stay here in Longview. So, that was a good event, and we appreciated having the opportunity to participate in that. It's time again for our Blue Santa program. We're kicking off our Blue Santa program. Anybody that's interested in donating to the Blue Santa program a new toy or gift that's, that's unwrapped, we are now accepting donations for that. And I've listed several locations here that have volunteered to be drop-off locations. Homewood Suites, Evergreen at Longview, McGaw and McGaw Dentistry, Brookdale Longview, Town Oaks Apartments, Alpine House, Telco Credit Union, Guaranty Bank on Hawkins Parkway, Everest Rehabilitation Hospital, and Books-A-Million will all have a depository there where people can make their donations there as well. We got the holiday shopping season is going to be upon us here in just a few days. I'd like to remind everybody that while they're out shopping, to please, in your vehicles, keep items hidden or out of view during the shopping season. We tend to have a lot of vehicle burglaries during this time, so I'd just like to ask everybody to be cognizant of that and secure the items and secure their vehicles while they're out shopping. And we all, we will also have extra patrols out during the holiday shopping season in the heavy retail locations as a proactive measure to help combat some of these issues that we have during the holidays. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Tillman.
Good evening, Mayor Matt, members of council, Mr. Bonds. Thank you for the opportunity to tell you about a few things that's happened in the Fire Department since your last meeting. First off, we'd like to congratulate Battalion Chief Doug Skinner. Chief Skinner has become the next Chief Level Officer of the Longview Fire Department to successfully complete the Texas Fire Chiefs Academy. It's, uh, gives him a certain distinction and professional designation that, that levels him out with a lot of his peers across the state, so we're certainly pleased that this is, of, of his accomplishment, and he's doing a great job for us. We know this will help him out further. Stop the Bleed activities. So, back in late October, we were able to participate with several different Stop the Bleed activities. This first slide is talking about a quilt that was raffled off during the Lewis Morgan Drugs anniversary, where they did their Boo the Flu celebration or event out in the parking lot. So Charmin's put together this firefighter quilt and raffled it off. I believe it went for somewhere in the neighborhood of $600, and those funds went toward buying Stop the Bleed kits to put out into the community to potentially do some good and save a life. In conjunction with that, Longview Regional also made a significant contribution of 33 kits and seven trainer kits toward the Stop the Bleed program. So, we're so pleased that this program has really taken a hold in the community and that we have such great community partners that are jumping on board with it and supporting it, and we just look forward to more great things. The Longview Fire Department Toy Drive, this is a save the date, and it's scheduled for Saturday, December the 14th, and in between now and then, feel free to drop off any new toys to any Longview Fire Department, anywhere around the city, any of our eight stations. And if you can't make any of that, then we'll have a drive-through set up, so you can come by, drop off your, your new unwrapped toys, and we can make sure that those get in the hands of children in this community that need them. So we're pleased to partner with the Longview Firefighters Association to do this once again. Space heater safety, and I realize it's, it's inevitable, every time I put a slot like this in there, we're going to have a warming trend for the next couple of days, but that's temporary. So, second to cooking fires, space heater fires are one of our primary causes of residential structure fires. So just a little reminder for residents in town that may have to use some type of a temporary space heater, to make sure that you plug those directly into a wall outlet. No power strips, no extension cords, no extension cord, power strip, extension cord, none of that, straight into the wall, please. Be sure that you keep those heaters three feet, a clear three feet around any type of flammable object, recliners, couches, curtains, whatever, 360 degrees, three feet out, just to give yourself a little bit of safe buffer zone. And then be sure you shut those off, and I don't only just recommend shutting them off, shut them off and unplug them from the wall when you're not going to be at home. We see a lot of fires typically every year from, from misuse or unintended consequences from the use of portable space heaters. And last but not least, our EMS subscription program is currently open. It will remain open until December the 31st, so we highly encourage local citizens here that want to take advantage of this to check out the website and see about getting their household signed up. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Tillman? Chief, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you both for all the safety tips you give us. The, the community needs to hear those things, and you can never hear them too often, so I appreciate you all taking the time to do that. Every time you come up, it makes a big difference. Thank you so much. We now have a consent agenda. Any items council that pulled off for separate discussion?
Item O, please.
Okay, noted.
I don't need to pull it off, but I'd like to talk about L and M.
Please do. Ms. Shahara?
You ready for me to do that now?
Yes, please.
Okay. If I could, I'd like to invite off any Longview Paws or Fett for Pet folks. Sylvia and Bill, I see you back there, and Kemper, I would like for you to come up also. On our consent agenda tonight, we are approving the receipt and acceptance of a $57,000 donation from Longview Paws. A large percentage of that is donated by Fett for Pets, so if you see or know Alicia Nolte or Sue Martin, guys, come on up here, please make sure and thank them also. But the donation is specifically for the use of a play yard at our facility, and I think we have a picture of the trust. So at our shelter here, if you have to venture, you should definitely go see that we've had a new facility for two and a half years. The shelter has been conducting play groups, which means adoptable animals in our shelter are getting together and having some play time with each other, which makes them -- do you need the microphone? Sorry. Sorry. Which makes, so the play groups are where adoptable animals waiting for homes at the shelter get together and play in a group, which makes them more adoptable and more attractive to individuals that are visiting our shelter, as well as socializes them, just makes it a happy environment. So, part of Longview Paws, our growth and investment back into the shelter has been through grants and private donations to help build a play facility in the outdoor area at the shelter, which will now be covered by a trellis. So today, we are approving the $57,000 donation, as well as the contract for beginning that construction, which you can see here, will be very nice and a lovely addition to our shelter. So, thank you to Bill and Sylvia, who are board members of Longview Paws, and Chris, who is the Director of our shelter, just wanted to recognize your contributions. So, thank you very much. Will you take a picture for us?
Thank you all very much for all that you're doing for the community. So with that, is there a motion for the consent agenda excluding item O?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Moore, would you like to discuss item O?
Uh, council will recall, last month, this was removed from the consent agenda. The original proposal was to eliminate the need for council approval completely for any non-bid budgeted items. I, I felt uncomfortable with that. I, I felt that, and still feel that the council needs to retain some level of oversight for larger purchases. Mayor asked that the item be tabled and asked staff to look at the data and come back to us with a recommendation of a monetary limit, and they have done so, and that proposal is, is $250,000. Now, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with $250,000, but, you know, if the consensus is a smaller amount, I'm not going to sit here and pout. Whatever the consensus is, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with, but I have every confidence that our staff is professional and competent, and there are plenty of checks and balances between the user departments and finance. I know finance will not issue a purchase order or approve a contract until the user department certifies that a particular line item is to be used and there are sufficient monies in it. As a matter of fact, we turned down a bid tonight because the bids were over what the finance department had in the budget. So, you know, with that, that's where we are tonight.
Ms. Cohen, thank you for being here, and thank you for all the work you all have done on this. And let me just ask you a quick question. I know the answer, but the pub needs to understand this. This is for non-competitive items only, correct?
Correct.
These are only for items that are already authorized expenditures within our budget that we've already approved, correct?
That is correct.
There is nothing here that's being spent that we don't already know about, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So, the intent of this is to, I know that there have been 32 of these items that have been on our deal. Every one of these, someone has to prepare an ordinance for, which that's Mr. Ray or their, their legal office, correct?
That is correct, yes.
They, they do all the preparation for these, and I know that's time-consuming, when we're, when these are already budgeted items anyway, correct?
Correct.
So, all this is really doing is making us more efficient, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And isn't that the goal of any business, is to become more efficient?
Yes, sir.
That's what I would think, anyway. These aren't items that are surprises to any of us. These aren't items that we don't know about. We all do our homework and do a very good job of that, and no one's trying to slot something under the table. So, I see this as being an efficient way of conduct, conducting city business and allows our legal staff to do things that they need to be doing, other than spending time on this that we basically approved anyway. So, I'm, I'm very comfortable with this, the way it's written. I don't think the amount really matters. I, I mean, they're, okay, don't take that literally. The amount does matter, but the point is, is if, if we don't have trust in the people that are doing this process for us anyway, those people shouldn't be working for us. So, you know, that's the level of trust within the organization, and I know Mr. Bonds is the City Manager, and he's become now the most powerful man in all of the community with his 400% increase, or whatever that, whatever that was. But it, it doesn't make sense to me to not do something that makes us more efficient, unless you can give me a reason not to.
No, I cannot, no.
Once again, I never ask a question, I don't have the answer to, so I'm glad to hear that.
And, and, you know, let me add that if the $250,000 level, it would eliminate the need for 75% of those items over the past year to have come to council and to have required this extra amount of man-hours to prepare, and it would still give us, as council, oversight for the big-ticket items, 25% of them. So, to me, it's the best of both worlds.
I agree, and, and I'm glad we're having this discussion, because we, we had this discussion at our last, when this was brought up before. And so, discussion is healthy, and I want the citizens to understand, this is something we're doing to improve your city government, not hide things from you, or not be, what we call not being transparent or something like that. That has nothing to do with this. This has to do with the level of trust and having a great organization that stays within their budgets that's already been approved by this council. So, you know, we're not, we're not going out above and beyond where we've already been. So, that would have to come to us, any budget I mean would come to us. So, we're not doing things that are not within our, within the rights of what we're already, have already approved.
I don't agree, I don't agree, Doc. We're giving up something here, and I, I feel uncomfortable with this. It, it makes no difference what amount it is. I was elected to see after the funds of, of the city with along with six other people sitting up here. I just, I just feel like we're giving up too much here to do this. Now, you say it's already in the budget, that's all well and good, but of a $165 million budget, we can't all sit up here, especially the ones that are in business, and go line item by line item and look at these, look at, look at where we're spending money. I started looking at this the day after Mr. Moore pulled it off the agenda, not, not a few days ago, a long time ago. And, you know, the little sheet that Ms. Cohen put out, that's $2.7 million. That wouldn't have come across the table for us. Now, whether it's being transparent, I've, I've not said anything about staff, nobody, I've not really said anything to anybody about this. I was elected to look after the funds for the City of Longview. Now, I can't see those funds that they're not put in front of me. We are prepared to budget every year. We, as a council, unless it's Mr. Moore, that, that's his, that's what he was versed in, and I, by the way, I do appreciate you bringing this up. And, and one of the things that bothered me on this was, there was no amount on this when it, when it came. That was the first thing that hit me right off the bat. Be it transparency, or be it whatever you want to call it, I actually started looking at this the Monday after that last Thursday meeting that we had, when you pulled this off the table. And I just don't, in my right mind, feel comfortable with this, because be it transparency, it's for somebody to pull up and look at this and tell us, yes, we saw what you voted on. We knew that was in the budget. Staff makes a budget up every year for us, and there's no way, like I said, that we can find out what's all in that budget. If they're over their budget or if they're under their budget, we'll never know. It's put into a, a fund. What is it put into, Keith?
We have several funds, I'm not sure.
No, when, when somebody is under on their budget, what is that money put into?
It just rolls over. Stays in the reserve.
Rolls over into what?
Reserve fund.
Okay. What do we use those reserve funds for?
Different things. This year, we use it for many one-time purchases.
Okay, what was the one-time purchase? Was it brought before us?
That they were in the budget, it was detailed in the budget what the one-time purchases were going to be.
One was a fire truck, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was a fire truck. It was a fire truck, I knew that. Why did that, why, in the coming year, when they were over on their budget, why didn't they knock their budget down, instead of putting it into another fund?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, say for instance, if they, they budget $2 million, and they only spent 1.8 million, and the $200,000 went into the reserve fund, why not the next year if they didn't, why was their, their budget not brought down the next year?
You don't know that it wasn't.
Well, I, I, we don't, Doc, and that's the thing.
We do, if you go through the budget like we do.
That's, that's the thing.
We do go, we do know whose budget came up and down every year, every department, I know whose, whose budget went up and whose budget went down.
But they never, really hardly ever bring it down. What I'm saying is, I just don't feel comfortable doing this. Whether it's, whether it's $50,000, all right, Keith, have you had a problem with us being able to fulfill a contract or buy something that, when we meet every two weeks?
No.
Well, then why did this get brought up? Because paperwork means nothing to me. Paperwork means a trail that we can follow and find out where we, as a council, are spending our money for the cit, the citizens' money.
All of our records are completely accessible to anyone.
Yeah, but we don't know what we're spending it on unless it comes up here. I, I don't know if you spent something, $50,000 on a consulting fee that was brought up. And next year, that consulting fee won't be brought to us if this goes through, probably. It'll just be put into the budget, we'll never know it. We'll never know if the guy comes back, we'll never know if he comes to $50,000 next year, 55 or 60, we'll never know.
Well, these are special.
We just, we will, we will have just hired a permanent employee on a consulting fee, and that won't be brought back to us next year. Now, I brought that up because I brought it up a while back, and that's what bothers me. We have no, we won't have any control over a lot of this stuff, and I don't care whether it's $50,000, $60,000, or $100,000. It's the transparency, like you say, Doc, that we've got something to look at, and we've got something to show to the citizens of Longview, where we're spending their money. We've got a record of it. We don't just okay it. And as far as the paperwork, and if the staff can't do what we're doing now, we either need to hire more staff or find somebody that's more diligent, because, you know, my business runs on paperwork. I have to document everything I do. Hey, I could say, yeah, you know, I'm not going to do this and just give them a bill for it, but that's not how it works. So, the transparency there is, is the paperwork, and that, that's where I, I like a record of it. it, you know?
Is there a number that you say you are comfortable with?
I'm still comfortable with the 50.
Okay.
Because you're looking at 400% increase. And I know you mentioned a while back that everything goes up, everything goes up, but we're not stymying him from spending this money. All I want to know is when it's being spent and where it's being spent. That's not, he's not responsible for that money. Staff's not responsible for that money. The seven of us sitting up here are responsible for that money.
What about this, Steve? Then, I don't know how this works, but tell me how this would work. If you want to, if you want to know everything that's being spent, they can give you a line item every time they spend a dollar. They can do that. But when we have to bring it before the council, that means the legal department has to spend time preparing this, and that's taking valuable time that they could be doing other things. Of these 32 that we voted on last year, how many did we vote against?
Zero.
Zero.
Well, that's fine, but that's not, that's not the case, Doc.
What I'm saying is, if you want to be, if you want to have a paper trail, we can give you a paper trail all day long. You can have every dollar you want.
It's not for me, Doc, it's for the citizens.
But you can look at it, and things that you don't, you have questions about, you can, you can question.
Well, I, I can't support this the way it is. I'm sorry, I just can't.
I'd like to point out one thing about the consulting, that the $50,000 is, not to be, diminish that amount, but it's a very small consulting fee. Our engineering and architectural consulting fees that never come to council dwarf that by-
Yeah, but that, because that's a state, that's a state law.
20 times that big, so.
That's a state law, I understand that, that certain, certain-
Professional services.
Certain services don't come to us because of that.
Right.
But if some of this stuff has come up, and we wouldn't have known about that if this would have been into effect of the consulting fee. Now, I'm using the consulting fee because UDC, for instance, that would be under your, your deal. That would be under the $200,000 we spent for the UDC so far.
But we did specifically approve that in the budget. I mean, so that was something we did discuss.
You did, you did, you know, approve.
But there again, if this stuff is brought in, under the assumption, we're going to approve it before, in the year previous to budget, and we hadn't been brought to us yet, the UDC again, for instance, we didn't get the UDC until August, and y'all had been working on this-
We're still on this.
-in April or May, and we passed it, and none of us had even seen it or knew what was going on with it until after that. So, staff took it on their own initiative that we were just going to pass it.
But we approved the budget for that like two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was been, that's been in the budget, I guess, before you got on the council.
Oh, that's possible.
But see-
No, no, you've been here three years. No, you've been here three years.
Yeah, it was, it was there, but I don't remember it, because it's kind of like the 380 agreement. Until you've been across one, you don't know what the 380 agreement is. Now, we all know. So, I just think we're giving up too much here. I, I can't, I just can't do that, I'm sorry, I just-
Okay, but, but you're, and I, and Steve, you're certainly welcome to-
This is setting the precedent for future city managers and for future staff, that if we, we give them this, you know-
And we're here to discuss what, what number we're comfortable with, and whatever number you're comfortable with is up to you, but if you're going to stand on a principle, your principle doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't really float if you're okay with, you're saying 50,000's okay, but 100,000 isn't, or 200,000 isn't. So, if you're saying you want to see everything, then 50,000 shouldn't be okay either, because you're still, 50,000 is still 50,000. If there was a consulting fee for 30,000, you wouldn't have seen that, and that's your, that's your argument. So, you're saying you want to see everything that we spend, and if that's the case, then you're going to have, we're going to have a lot of paperwork in front of us, because-
Well, that's what we pay staff for, Doc.
But that's also why we're supposed to review the budget ourselves, and we, and if you're not reviewing the budget, then you should be, because I review every single page of it.
I know, and I knew you were going to come back at me with that, but I don't have the time, and you don't have the time, to sit down and look through 165 million.
I'd look through every single page of it.
Okay, if you look at this right here, you look at the budget sheet that we got, that's fine, as far as where those numbers are at, but then where are you going to go into those numbers and find out where they're spending on everything into those, those numbers? There's, there's no possible way you could do that.
There's no way you're going to.
That's what I'm saying. So, by it not being up here for us to look at, be it a consent agenda or a regular agenda, there's no way that we're going to know about this.
I do, so I, I understand your point, Steve. I think it is nice sometimes to have an extra just built-in level of security. I mean, it's, you know, we're just looking at it again, we see it again, but I do think it's important that we're clear that it's not an issue for me of transparency. All of that information is before us, we voted on it, and it is available to us if we want to inquire further. I am, myself, sympathetic to wanting to streamline certain processes, and for spending valuable attorney time creating these things that we looked at, didn't pull off the consent agenda, and just had to spend lots of time putting in there, I am in favor of making this change. But I do, I do hear what you're saying, I just wanted to tell you that. I think there is value to relooking at things sometimes and simply doing that extra layer of work, so understand what you're saying. I just think in this instance-
But the problem is, is you won't want to know what to look at if it's not put in front of you. The consulting fee, that had been brought to us, we wouldn't know what we're doing. We wouldn't know what to look at. Now, there again, if it's under the 50, and we have to, we have to accept the 50, because that's been there for 10 years almost now.
You don't have to accept it, if you don't like the 50, you don't have to accept the 50 either.
Yeah, the 50 still has to be in the budget.
It's, it's got to be in the budget, it cannot be outside the budget, has to be non-competitive bids.
I understand that.
Without, without any constraint on our budget that we've already approved. That's, that's the bottom line.
But did you know that we were going to look at this consulting fee for the insurance company from Chicago, that when you looked at the budget six months ago, did that strike you and hit you right there? Hey, we're going to hire a consulting firm from Chicago for $50,000, that's in here. Did you see that? I didn't see it.
No, I did not see that.
See, and that's what I'm trying to get to. We don't, we won't catch those items unless they're brought before us, and we can discuss them and talk about them. You know, understand it's in the budget. Staff makes the budget. I make a budget when I do a project. Customer sees the budget, for the most part, of what we're doing. That's all I'm asking for, is we've got to have something that we can look at. I've got to have something I can look at. Where I'm, where am I spending the citizens' money at? That's, that's the problem I'm having here. There's, you can call it transparency, you can, whatever you want to call it, but I just, I can't see that those numbers, because I don't have the time, you don't have the time. Nobody up here has the time to go through 165 million dollar line item, line item budget, like the city manager and city staff does. That's their job for three or four, five months in the year, is prepare the budget for the next year. There's no way we can sit down and go through line item by line item by line item. It's just not. So, the transparency comes up when it comes up to us in an agenda to look at and vote on.
I think, I understand that this is to streamline the process, and I have no problems with what, what staff wants to do, but I do have, I do think that I would prefer to leave it at the current $50,000, because although we should all know what's in that budget, line by line, the community doesn't necessarily know what's in there, line by line. And if they're really interested, then when we meet, a lot of people, I get calls about what's in the, on the agenda for the night, well, they can go back to, they can look at the consent agenda and see what's on there, what we're voting on, and if, if we never have it in the consent agenda, more than likely, they're not going to know what we're voting on. So, I mean, I'm not, this makes it more convenient for staff, but convenience isn't always necessarily a great thing. So, I understand why they would, why staff would like to have this done, and I appreciate it, and this is more of a, an eye-test thing. It's not because it's not something that's a good thing to change, but I think for the purpose of the citizens of Longview, I think I would prefer to leave it at $50,000.
I would agree with that amount, because that's the way it is being.
I don't, I mean, I have no issues with that either. I don't think we're here to discuss, it's not really the amount, as we've all said, we don't really care what the amount is. I think we're, we wanted to try to make it as convenient and as-
Efficient.
-efficient for our staff. And so, and, and I'll be honest with you, I don't know what that number is. I don't know how much time, I just know that they spend a lot of time doing this.
The staff overworked now for this? I mean, we don't know that, they have to tell us.
I don't, I don't know that. And so, you know, because, because we don't, we're not trying to make this where our city manager has carte blanche to spend money we don't know about. That's never been the intention. As Angela said, this is not the intention. As you said, you don't care what the number is.
No.
You all don't care. You didn't, you didn't care what the number was, and I don't think we care either, to the point where we were going to argue over this. What I think we need to do is, I, I really would like to know what, what is involved with, with the process that we're going through, you know, when we have to prepare these things. I'd like to know the man-hours involved, I'd like to know the cost of that in, in numbers, and then we could really look at that and say, okay, then we can weigh which is, which is better. Is it, is it more efficient to do it this way, because it's going to cost us this amount of money, or do we leave it where it is and say, we just keep doing it the way we've been doing it? So, I don't have a problem with that, and I would, I would like to see that information, if, if you're okay with that.
Sure, that's it, that'd be interesting.
And, and so, I mean, and this isn't something that-
Well, I do have one other question.
Just, just one second.
Okay.
This isn't something that we have, that's, that's make or break, that's, that's do or die, that's costing us any, any contracts or any purchases. This is not something that we're in dire straits, that we have to, a timeline, we have to accomplish this. Is that correct, Ms. Cohen?
That's correct.
So, you know, let's take our time, and let's, let's make sure we've done the right thing, and let's, let's evaluate all aspects of it, and then then we'll move forward at a pace that we all are comfortable with, or, or we may not all be comfortable with, but would at least all have more information. And so, if you're okay with that, that's the way I would proceed. Mr. Pearl, what was your, your comment?
Well, if they have to prepare this to buy it, or do whatever they're going to do with it, before it hits the consent agenda, what's the difference? I mean, he has to have paperwork or something to do whatever he's going to buy. He just can't go out and get a consultant, or, I'm, I'm using the consultant, because that's, that's the latest thing we've had to come up. He just can't go out and get that consultant without having some kind of paperwork, some kind of attorney time, something. So, basically, when he does this, all he's ended up doing is putting it in writing for us to look at. He still has to have something to do. He can't just walk in and say, well, I need a $50,000 consultant this month, and bingo. I mean, he has to have a reason for it, he has to have a paper trail or something there, just like you do when you do a patient. Whoever refers you to that patient, you've got a paper trail before it gets to you. It's not something that just, they walk in, you do your thing, and then they walk out, you know, so-
I think you're primarily talking about the resolutions that get added.
It's an added step to the process, and it takes about four weeks extra, and it takes a couple hours of attorney time, and purchasing, it's probably a few thousand dollars every time we bring-
So, you're telling me every time we put up a consent agenda on here, it's a few thousand dollars?
Yes.
And there's a three-page resolution in there.
And there's some intangibles, too.
What's that, Doc?
The, the waiting time, two, three, four weeks, a notice to proceed, or a contract being executed, or a purchase order being done, we're just four weeks later getting a project done, or-
But that's, that's, that's irrelevant, because it's already in the budget. The money's already there, because we've already approved it. We're just asking for note, I'm just asking for notification that this money has been spent and where it's being spent at. Time's relevant to me at that point, because that's what staff's up here to do.
Time is money.
Well, I hold, I know that more than, more than you think, Mr. Moore.
Oh, I know.
But, you know, that's what the turn, the city attorneys and staff are up here to do, is to get this stuff prepared for us to look at, so we will have that paper trail, so we will have that transparency.
I'm over, we table this for a future council meeting to give staff additional time to give us the input that we're, we're looking for.
Sure, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Very good, because I would really like that. I would like to see these hard numbers. I would like to see time, hard numbers, because, you know, this is going to be, this is going to be one of those things that's going to have an axis. One's going this way, and one's going this way, and somewhere they're going to cross, and that cross is where efficiency is going to be of utmost importance to us.
Sure.
So, I would like to see where that cross is, if it's at 50,000, if it's at 200,000. I don't know that answer, but I'd like to know where that is, because that's, that point right there is where we're going to be looking at and saying, okay, this is where we, we become, we're, we're not spending money wisely, or we are spending money wisely.
Sure.
From, from a taxpayer standpoint. Can we do that?
We sure can.
Y'all are awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the discussion. Okay, we are now to zoning. We have a public hearing on application S-1904 filed by Mr. Ron L. Young on specific use permit. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Bonds. The applicant is proposing to build a new donut shop located at 1901 South High Street. He is requesting a specific use permit for the donut shop with a drive-through window in general retail zoning district. A specific use permit is required for drive-through windows within this zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Through the development process, the applicant will comply with all of City of Longview Development's standards, including fencing and buffering to the adjacent residential properties. Staff does find that the proposed SUP is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding lane uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Does this require a public hearing, which is now opening? Any speakers on this, in this issue? Any questions, Ms. Cohen? Or Ms. Choi, I'm sorry. Hi, Ms. Choi. Did I call you Cohen a minute ago? I don't think I did, I'm sorry if I did. If not, public hearing is now closed, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Public hearing held to consider application Z-19-11 filed by Adams Engineering. And Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezone for approximately 4.228 acres of Abstract 67 GLS survey located on the west side of Ford Lane, south of Gum Springs Road, for an expansion of the Aon facility. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers on this issue? Any questions, Ms. Choi? If so, is there a motion? Um, excuse me, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, the action item, city resolution, naming the section of the Guthrie Trail in honor of Frank Penny Edwards. Mr. Wade.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, council. In honor of a really, really good citizen of Longview, Texas, Frank Penny Edwards, I'd like the council to consider a resolution of naming a section of Guthrie Trail in honor of Mr. Edwards. Lead Co has requested to name the section of Guthrie Trail Phase 1, which is on the map there, after Mr. Frank Penny Edwards. That's it.
Any, any discussion? I'd probably like to say, first of all, thank you, Ray, for bringing this forward, but, you know, I, I asked Mr. Edwards to be on the Lead Co board when I became the mayor, and he so graciously agreed to do that, and was such a valuable member of that board. He, he brought so much, remember when he brought, when I said, he brought color. I don't mean color, I mean, he brought enthusiasm, and he brought, he brought great ideas, and he brought a different perspective, and he brought things that were so important to that Lead Co board at that time, that was in such a transitional stage, and I appreciate Frank's guidance. He helped me in so many ways. He helped me understand things that were going on in the areas of town that I, I wasn't aware of, and he did it in such a, such a kind way, that you just wanted to put your arms around him and just hug him like a big old bear. He had so much involvement in the rodeo down, in the South Side rodeo, and all those things that made him such a special human being, so I think it's quite an honor and quite fitting to honor him and his legacy in this, in naming this trail in this manner, because he, he would've never wanted this or asked for this, but, you know, hope he's smiling down upon us, saying thank you very much, because he deserved this in, in every way possible.
It's truly a great honor, and thank Lead Co and the council for recognizing him.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City resolution authorized city manager, or city manager does need to enter license agreement for the placement of balloon sculptures at specified downtown locations. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. What we're asking you to do is to authorize the city to enter into a license agreement allowing for the placement of balloon sculptures at specific downtown locations within city-owned rights of ways as part of the Longview 150 balloon sculpture project. According to Greg County Historical Museum, the balloon sculpture project is a celebration of Longview's history and heritage through the custom-made metal hot air balloons that will be strategically placed around town to celebrate the Longview sesquicentennial. Businesses can either purchase a five-foot-six or a three-foot metal white balloon sculpture that they will customize with art, either painted or with a wrap, that will celebrate what makes their business special. We have three before you tonight to consider for the locations. The first one is for the Greg County Historical Museum to be located on the southeast corner of Fredonia and Methvin, and here you can see a rendering of what that balloon is, is gonna have on it. It's gonna have a lot of different items that represent Greg County and the museum, and will, will represent them well. The second one that we have is for Sugar Magnolia, and it's gonna be located on the southwest corner of Fredonia and Methvin, and there you can see that very colorful balloon. And then, Texas Bank and Trust has one that they're gonna locate on the southeast corner of Green and Whaley. Under the licenses, the individuals or the companies, not the city of Longview, will own the balloons, and they will be granted that license to locate them in the right-of-way. Our city engineer, Alton Bradley, and, as well as the 100 acres of heritage, have reviewed the locations. We wanted to make sure that the balloons also did not take away from the multimillion-dollar investment that we've made downtown with our streetscapes and intersection improvements, but also to allow another example of public art and community pride through this project. The balloons will be strategically placed behind the landscape planners as to not interfere with pedestrian use of the sidewalks, as well as to not interfere with vehicular visibility at the intersection, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Shirley? What a great project this is gonna be for the community. Congratulations.
So, the license thing is just so that they can put them on public?
On public property, correct.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Very good. Renowned to items of community interest, Mr. Moore.
The Longview Public Library has begun accepting audio files from citizens to share their treasured Longview memories in the library's podcast that I spoke about a couple of months ago, Longview 150 Stories. The podcast will debut on January 1, 2020, to celebrate this sesquicentennial. To record your memories and have them shared on the library's podcast, you can email your audio files, up to 30 minutes long, to 150stories@longviewtexas.gov, and the library will play the audio files up to seven minutes long on the podcast from January to May. Afterwards, the audio files will be permanently archived in the library for listeners to enjoy for years to come. If you don't have the equipment to record your own audio files, the library will assist with recording during scheduled time slots, and for more information on an appointment, please call Cassie Burford, Technical Services Supervisor for the library at 903-237-1346. And as a short example, here's a short clip from the library's first podcast recording with local author Kimberly Fish talking about the oil boom.
People were making millions hand over fist. Con artists were riding in on the trains with oil workers, and both amazing things were happening and some pretty desperate things were happening. And because it was all flying by the seat of its pants, the Texas Rangers were brought in to organize some sort of police presence in this, because it was so chaotic, and in the federal government...
So, to hear the, the rest of Kimberly's story and others, go to the library's webpage on the city's website beginning January 1st, and you can hear these podcasts. Continuing on the library theme, the annual food for fines is continuing now through November 25th. One can or boxed food of at least 12 ounces with a Thanksgiving theme will clear $1 in fines up to $20 maximum. This is an excellent opportunity to get your, your fines cleared up and to help out our community during this holiday season. And, and one final thing, Mayor, if you'll just indulge me for a quick story. I know Veterans Day has come and gone, but my wife and I took a plane to North Carolina three weeks ago, and the flight had the honor of carrying home the body of a 18-year-old PFC Marine. And, and the really special and moving part of this was, this young man was killed in 1943 in a remote, on a remote Pacific island, and it was just in this last year that DNA matching has been able to identify him so he could be taken home to his family. And it, it just, it just drove home to me that for many military families, just because a treaty is signed, the war is not necessarily over.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone. Just an announcement. Do you know someone who has demonstrated a lifetime of leadership in promoting harmony, understanding, and social justice? So, partners in prevention are now accepting nominations for their 2020 Unity Honors Award. Nomination deadline is Friday, November 15, 2019. Submit your nomination online, longviewtexas.gov/unityhonors. And Mayor, just a reminder, didn't you say we would always start sending 150 so we wouldn't have to say?
Yes.
Yeah, that's sesquicentennial thing.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Wade.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'd first like to thank everyone for coming out to Broughton Recreation Center on Tuesday to, to hear about the plans for the future development of Broughton Recreation Center, Broughton staff, I'm sorry, Broughton Park. I'd like to thank the city staff for being there and supporting me, all the citizens of District 3 that came out and voiced their thoughts and opinions on the future of Broughton Recreation Center and Broughton Park. It was, it was really a good night, and can't thank the citizens and everyone enough for being a part of it. On Thanksgiving Day, I am hosting a open Thanksgiving dinner for really the citizens of Longview, but it'll be held at Broughton Park, and I would like to invite everyone out. Anyone interested in volunteering is more than welcome to contact me. That's my personal cellphone number, so I actually answer that number, so feel free to call me, and I'll listen to all Thanksgiving stories and all thoughts on being involved. No need to prepare any dishes, the food will all be prepared. All we'd like is the bodies there and everyone to be involved. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're good, ma'am, Mr. Wade. Ms. Ishihara.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Wright.
Well, after three and a half years of planning, designing, and constructing, including many environmental and weather challenges, I was pleased to be able to attend the ribbon cutting for the new transit station on November 4th, last Monday, a year, a week ago last Monday. The transit system here has been in operation since 2003, and the initial application for the transit station was made in 2016. So, I just wanna congratulate everybody who was involved in that. You guys have done a fantastic job. I went up there and it was just a really nice, the, the station is really nice, it's, they've done a really fantastic job there. And then, I also wanna mention, I don't know how many of you saw the New York Times article here about a month ago or so, but I wanna mention something that whoever that writer was totally missed. I don't know if you saw the paper here, when was it last, just before the, the lights opened, the Carmella's Lights opened up, and they had an article in the paper about the special needs kids who were able to have their own light there and visit with Santa Claus and all, and I just wanna say, we have fantastic people. I'm fortunate to have some fantastic people in District 5. Mark Atkinson and Carmella Davis do just an unbelievable job every year with their lights, and I just appreciate everything they do. They've done a wonderful job up there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pirtle.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Bonds.
Okay. I wanna just read something real quick, and then we'll move on. When World War I, known as the time, at the time that's the Great War officially ended when the Treaty of Versailles was signed on June 28, 1919, in the Palace of Versailles outside the town of Versailles, France. However, fighting ceased seven months earlier when armistice of temporary cessation of hostility between the allied nations of Germany went into effect on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. That reason, November 11, 1918, is generally regarded as the end of the war, to end all wars. In November 1919, President Wilson proclaimed November 11 as the first commemoration of Armistice Day with the following words. "To us in America, the reflections of Armistice Day will be filled with solemn pride in the heroism of those who died in the country's service, with gratitude for the victory, both because of things from which it has freed us, because of the opportunities it has given America to show her sympathy with peace and justice in the councils of nations." So, with this week being Veterans Day, I think we should stop and think and thank and be grateful. Mr. Moore, we appreciate your, your sentiments on that as well.
Thank you.
So, upcoming events, City of Longview office will be closed for Thanksgiving holiday. Due to Thanksgiving, Thursday's trash recycling will be collected on Friday, November 29th. Christmas tree lighting is to be Sunday, November 24th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Thanksgiving food drive is Monday, November 25th, from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. Upcoming community events, we have an evening with President George W. Bush on Tuesday, December 3rd, at 7:00 p.m. Don't miss that, at the Belcher Center. 12:19 Longview Ambyx Christmas Parade is Thursday, December 5th, at 6:30 p.m. I hope you'll attend that. I love that every year. I can't wait to see what my, my wife will dress me up as this year. Every year, it's getting worse and worse, I'll just have to say. Hopefully, my shoes will look like shoes this year and not things that point up like this. I don't know. So, for more information about city events, go to longviewtexas.gov/counters, and more information on community events, please contact Calendar at visitlongviewtexas.com/events. Before we go to the survey, I want to, two, two questions, two things. First of all, I wanna thank Sean, and Richard, and Scott, and Terry, and all the media staff that helped put on the State of City address this year. We had it last week, and it was, it was a lot of fun. I enjoyed it. Once again, those, sometimes those things kinda wear on me, but this was a great event, and it was fun, and it was enjoyable, and people enjoyed being there, and that doesn't happen, because to me, that happens because of a wonderful city staff that spends hours and hours and hours and countless time preparing and making that an event that everybody can, can enjoy. And Mr. Moore did very well in our trivia event, being that he won the event, and people have asked me, how did Mr. Moore win? I go, well, he's only been here that long. Look at him. I mean, good, great. He's been here forever. The man knows everything. There's nothing he doesn't know. Ms. Ishihara did very well as well, so we, we had a good time, but I wanna thank city staff, because that's an event that's put on by the chamber, and, and we do our best to make that a, a city, city proud event. So, thank you all for all that you do and for making that such a good event. Thanks to all, also, every council member attended, and, and I appreciate that. I didn't ask you to attend, but your presence there shows strength, and it shows solidarity, and it shows, and I respect you for that, and I thank you each one for being there, because you have other things you could've done during that day, and I thank you for your attendance, and our city manager as well, and multiple city staff members were there. On a sad note, I wanna let you know that a wonderful community philanthropist has passed away today. Mr. Tom Chen passed away today. Mr. Chen was so responsible in so much giving to our community, for our body cameras, for our police officers, for things that he, he alone stood up and stood out and, and made incredible contribution to our community, and it's a sad day that we lose a man like Mr. Chen, and I know that his family is grieving, and I know that we are grieving with you, because he was a great man, and we, our prayers are with you, and we, we wish you all, all the prayers and comfort that you can, you can achieve. Survey time. How many years have we been celebrating Veterans Day or Armistice Day in the United States? 50, 75, 100, 125? Well, I think you all probably know the answer to that, and 43% of the people knew the answer to that, it's 100 years. So, this is our 100th year celebration, basically. And once again, what a, what a great and special time it is to celebrate those that have given more than we will ever know or understand. Funnest question ever for me. Do you decorate for Christmas before or after Thanksgiving? Before, on, after, or I don't know, I leave that to my significant other. Okay, 63% after.